Okay, it's six o'clock. It looks like we got everybody aboard here. So I'm gonna call a city council meeting to order at exactly six o'clock. And as we always do, we'll start off with public comment if anybody would like to address the council. Remember, this isn't a time to ask questions or to engage in debate. And you can address the council for up to three minutes. And if you would, please identify yourself and where you're from. Do we have anybody who would like to speak tonight, Leila?
We do. Karen Small. Karen, you should be able to unmute yourself.
I think I did.
Yes, you did. Thank you.
Okay. I'm Karen Legrave Small, speaking for Water. I'm a mother, grandmother, and hope to live long enough to be my great grandchildren. I live full-time in Manzanita. I've spoken before about how trees and plants hold water in their needles and leaves and roots. We need this to keep fresh water on the planet. Don't wait. An additional learning I've experienced recently is that when we clear the earth of vegetation, not only do we lose the water stored by the plants, but the bare earth then reflects the sun, heating up the air and evaporating water. So we lose more fresh water that way. So how does that affect us? In our area, in our watershed, clearcutting has that effect. In our town, development where the land is scraped and compressed has that effect. We're all responsible for the future of our land and our water, aren't we? We have enough water now. But what about the future? Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Do we have anyone else who'd like to address the council tonight?
Yes, we do. Sandy Wood. Tie it. Oops. Okay, Sandy, you should be able to unmute.
Unmute?
Yes. Oh, there you are.
Okay, three things. First, I want to thank you for denying the Manzanita Lofts project. Second, thank you very much for doing the town halls, and I'm sorry you got COVID from it. But I appreciate the fact that you're already using some of the information that people gave you. And I have a comment on the Third Street Plan, talking about bare earth. They do not have an application, and I understand as far as what their design process is going to be, but I have seen one that is their newer version that has parking throughout the development, more trees, et cetera, et cetera. And I wanted to put in my preference for that plan over the one with all the parking along Third Street. So, thank you, and...
Okay, thank you, Sandy. Do we have anyone else with hand raised?
Not at this time.
Okay. Then let's move forward with tonight's consent agenda. Tonight, we're looking at approval of the meetings from the January or the June 15th Special City Council Meeting, the July 6th Work Session, and the July 6th Regular Session, and approval of bills for payment, which everybody on the council should have already seen. So is there any questions or concerns about the consent agenda? Have a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. And I do so in honor of Hans Tanges, who recently left the council, but it was his duty, each month, at least it became that, to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. So I just want to publicly thank as well as I'm sure all of us do, Hans's 14 years of contribution to our community. And he was part of some difficult times. Everything from pandemics to a whole lot of other stuff. And so I make that motion in honor of Hans.
Well, I'd like to second that about Hans. Hans served four years on the City Planning Commission and 10 years on the council. He did an awful lot of work for the city. He also put in eight years on the Reinhardt Clinic Board. So we're gonna miss Hans. I'm not seconding the consent agenda. I need somebody to second the consent agenda. Linda, I think you're muted. If that's...
I'll second it, and I everything you guys said about Hans. He is going to be really missed on the city council. His solid leadership and his thoughtful process was always valuable to us all. So he will be missed.
We moved in second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say nay. The consent agenda is approved. So now that we've talked about Hans a little bit, our first item on the agenda is the appointment process to fill this open city council position. I'm gonna turn that over to Leila to explain.
Thank you, Mayor. So just shared my screen. Assume you can all see that. Great. So I just wanted to kind of walk through what the appointment process is and just in case folks had any questions. So the process and timing comes from the city charter. So we're guided by the charter in terms of how to fill vacancies. I've pasted Section 33, which is the filling of vacancies. We received a resignation letter from Councilor Tanges about a week and a half ago. That only became effective on August 1st. So on August 1st, we posted notice of that open position. So there was no lapse in time in terms of the date of the position being vacated officially, and then the notice being posted. We're required by our charter to post that for 30 days. And that opens up an application window for that 30-day period. So the notice was posted in three different, four different places across town. So the Fifth Street Restrooms, the Visitor Center at the Post Office. And then we also posted applications with that as well, as well as being posted on the city's website. So those applications are now available. And folks that are interested in applying for that position should get a copy of that application. Again, it's online and submit that to the City Hall email, or it can be submitted in person up to the August 31st at 5:00 PM. And that's when the application window will close. Those applications will then be shared immediately with the city council. And then per charter, the, there will be interviews that will be conducted at the September 7th meeting, by which council will do public interviews with applicants. And then the appointment will be conducted by ballot. So that's the process, and I would be glad to answer any questions that folks might have, but just kind of wanted to give folks a real clear indication of how how the process works and where that process is derived from. The applicant that is selected ultimately will fulfill the remainder of Councilor Tanges's term, which expires in December 31st, 2024. So approximately two and a half years.
So let me ask a question, because I know that some people are a little confused out there, because this resignation just happens to overlap our regular election process. Hans's term goes for another two years and four months or something. So if someone applied through this process, they'll be interviewed by the city council and voted in possibly by ballot of the councilors September 7th. What, as an elections officer, can you explain how the other process works for people that are gonna run on the ballot?
Sure thing, and yeah.
Position?
Yeah, I'm happy to. And we've also put some very detailed instructions on there, because we're getting close to that timeline. So if folks are interested in running for one of the three open positions, which are two council positions and then one in the mayor position, you need to fill out an SEL 101 form and then SEL 121 form, and then meet with the elections officer. That's generally me, but I'm actually out next week. So I have delegated that responsibility to Judy Wilson on our staff, who'll be filling in in my absence. Folks need to meet with the elections official, have those documents reviewed in person with the elections official. They must be date stamped by the elections official prior to the collection of signatures. Per charter, applicants or petitioners are required to collect 20 signatures from Manzanita voters. You must also be a resident or have been a resident of the city of Manzanita and a registered voter for at least one year in order to qualify. Then those signatures need to be submitted back to the elections official, and then those will be hand-delivered to the county clerk, and they need to be verified by the county clerk prior to the August 30th deadline. So we're getting to a point where it's getting close. So and the council hearing for the appointment happens on September 7th. Folks that are filing or petitioning to file for elective office, once approved, have only until the 2nd of September to withdraw their names. Otherwise, I will be submitting the list of candidates to the county on September 2nd. So so that's the process. If folks are interested in running for office, I strongly, strongly advise you to schedule an appointment with the city's elections official. You can do so by emailing ci.mantanita.or.us. And as I've mentioned multiple times, there's very detailed instructions on the city's website to do that. But just to remind folks, those signatures must be collected and verified by the county clerk no later than August 30th.
Yeah, just to be clear, we have on the ballot a position of mayor open and two city council positions. This vacancy that has occurred because of Hans's resignation is another opening on the city council and is separate from the ones that are on the ballot. So is there any questions from the council in the process here?
I just had one question for Leila, and I didn't get the chance to look at the charter. But in the past, we've had these interview, the interview process for for the current vacancy during regular council sessions. And I'm wondering if there's any opportunity or benefit to handle that at the work session? And whether the charter prohibits that? It seems to me it says regular council meeting. The definition of regular council meeting, does that mean regular as in a council, the regular council meeting, or does it mean a regularly scheduled meeting of the council?
I interpret it as our regular business meeting, because you're making, which is this meeting, and you are making a decision, and you can only make a decision at the regular council meeting.
Well, I wasn't thinking the decision would be made in work session. I was thinking the interview process would be held during the work session. I just know how awkward it's been in the past for this interview process to occur. I don't know, maybe it doesn't really matter. It just seems like it's a more of a work session interview would be a kinder, gentler approach than doing it during a regular session.
It is a little awkward. We've done it before. But yeah, we'll do the interviews at the regular session, then we'll do a secret ballot, depends how many candidates we have. And if we vote somebody in, that person immediately, according to the charter, will be sworn in, and we'll take a position on the council at that meeting. So it just bing bang boom, that's how it goes. So before we move on, has anybody in the public got a question about the election process that is coming up?
Don't see any hands raised.
Okay. All righty, let's move on to the next item on the agenda is an amendment to the city manager's contract, and I'm gonna turn that over to Council President Linda Collins.
Okay, so I am looking for a motion this evening to approve the revised city manager employment agreement effective June 1st, 2022. The city manager received her initial and current employment agreement effective June 1st, 2021. The city manager has successfully completed 13 months of her contract. City council did not conduct her review until July 6th, 2022, at which time council concluded that the city manager had more than exceeded expectations. Additionally, the city completed a salary survey, which is conducted every four years, which included compensation increases for all the staff. It did not include a compensation increase for the city manager. It's just, we don't traditionally do that. So the revision in the, we'll be talking about, are minimal, but will include a salary increase. So the new salary of $10,750 per month includes 7% COLA and also aligns her with the compensation review of staff. Staff step numbers were increased, and this allows, this increases the manager, so it's consistent and consistent with what staff has received. This section also clarifies when the city manager's salary shall be approved, which is more regimented than what we did this time, and includes a review of the city manager's salary when the salary survey is completed, which I think is important. This section also clarifies when, when the proposed changes to the city manager's salary shall be made to ensure incorporation in the city annual budget process. In Section 6C, in Section 6D, we remove references about prorated both sick leave and management leave based on the first year of employment. The rest is the same, and the contract is in your packet, and I'm sure you've had time to review. So I request any questions or discussion, and then a request for a motion to approve.
Any questions or comments from the council? Can I have a motion to approve the amendment from someone on the council?
Mr. Mayor, I would move for approval of the revised city manager employment agreement retroactively affected to June 1st of 2022.
Can I have a second, please? Jerry, I think you're muted, but I saw your hand go up. I'm gonna catch you as second. So in favor of the approval of the city manager's contract amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Thank you. Motion passes. Let's move on to the next item on our agenda, which is City Hall Outreach and Project Update, and I'll give that to Leila to introduce her guest.
Great, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm happy to have tonight here with us Jesse Steiger, who is our owner's representative. Jesse has really taken over the helm for Jim Williford, who was also with Klosch Group, but left to pursue other opportunities. I'll just speak on behalf of Jesse. She's been a wonderful addition to the team, and she has really gotten us very quickly up to speed. In fact, today, we issued, I'm sorry, yesterday, due to her help, we issued the owner, I'm sorry, the CMGC contract. So that has gone live, which is another huge step in the process. And she has just really taken the reins in terms of getting us organized and really keeping me on track. I want to acknowledge that Jesse's also a design build professional and a professional engineer, so we're gonna benefit a great deal from her expertise. Joining us tonight as well is Chris Keen, who is our lead architect with Baring Architecture. And we currently, we three make up the main team in terms of advancing the city hall project and have been working together over the last couple of months to both get Chris finally under contract and to start planning forward our schedule and our outreach for the project. So with that, I'll hand it over to Jesse and Chris, and we'll go through sort of, they put together a nice slideshow, which I also included in the packet for folks that outlines the project's next steps and sort of broad-brush how the sort of next first phase of this project will work. And just to remind folks out there, we split this project into two pieces. We will be working through sort of 30% schematic design, and at such time that we get through that process, we will then be coming to the council, and it will be the next council to make a decision on financing before we proceed with the rest of the project. So with that, I'll hand it over to the team and to go through what the next steps are.
Great. Thank you. That was a really nice introduction, Leila. Hello, everybody. My name's Jesse, and like she said, I'll be the project manager for this job, doing all the day-in, day-out nitty-gritty details and making sure this project gets done well for you. I recently just finished a, some public schools, so I've been in a kind of an intense political environment, you know, helping to get funding arranged, bonds passed. So that is not new to me. So you know, diving into that aspect of this project. And then I just want to also mention that Jeff Caldwell, who's the owner of our company, who you may be more familiar with, he will also still be involved in the project, though a little bit more kind of at the public meetings and council meetings. He just happens to be out of town today. So with that, I just want to turn it over to Chris. He really did most of the work getting this put together, and he's just gonna explain our process going forward and the public process, and what some of our next steps are. Go ahead, Chris. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Jesse. I'm gonna try to share my screen here, and once I do that, maybe this first slide is a kind of a schedule overview. And I'm wondering maybe if Jesse, do you want to just kind of talk through that at a high level, and then I can get into the next slides?
Sure. So the first, we do have the first public workshop scheduled. I know Leila has worked on or is working on kind of getting the word out. So the, we've scheduled that for late August. It's on a Monday evening. And our, our plan for that, the first public workshop, is not so much us talking and presenting information as much as a listening session about what the community is really hoping to get out of this project. And then we kind of ballparked some tentative dates, kind of about a, it's not really a month increment, more like five to six weeks in between, and spacing them out so that before Christmas, we've been able to get a bunch of feedback from the public and then also present a lot of information so that by the time we've wrapped up that December meeting, that hopefully we have the, the community involvement aspect of it can say, hey, of the four scenarios we've made up, that this community is recommending scenario number two for these reasons. And so that in, when we have a new council formed in February, that we can bring forward all of our research, all of our information with a recommendation, but also information on several different options for you. There were also, as Leila mentioned, we're working on getting our contractor on board, and we hope to be presenting their contract to you for approval in November. I mentioned February is bringing information, which would be a decision-making, a decision-making meeting for which scheme to go forward with and which, you know, how much funding to pursue. Following the funding decision, we would pick up design from that point, and at that point, really just kind of go as quickly as possible and figure out the schedule and get this thing built. So the rest of the dates, kind of when it gets built, and it's really highly dependent on a scheme getting approved and funding approved as well. But if we can kind of keep things moving along, we'd be looking at being able to move into this building in the spring of 2025.
Thanks, Jesse. So I, I think that's a good overview of where we are. As Leila and Jesse said, we're really kind of just getting rolling now on the, this first part of the process. And what I wanted to do was, you know, as part of an update, just kind of go back to where we're starting from, really, as a design team. As I know you guys are all very familiar with, you passed a resolution, I think it was back last summer, about kind of establishing the community goals and values for this project. So I'm just kind of putting them up on the screen as a reminder to all of ourselves where we're starting from. We want to get value out of this project. We want to match the culture of the community. And we want a project that's environmentally sustainable. And there were a number of themes that came as part of that as well. Inspiring, user-friendly, efficient, innovative. So these are kind of the, the baseline starting point that we as a design team are beginning the process from. But we also know that there really needs to be kind of a robust process here of public engagement. And we are, as Jesse said, starting that at the end of this month. We're gonna have our first meeting. But I think it's important to make clear that we're really starting this process from scratch. I know there was a previous process. We can acknowledge that and realize that we need to kind of start from the very beginning. We want to develop a process here that's transparent, and that is about building trust with the community. And in order to do that, we anticipate a process that's gonna be iterative. We're gonna be looking at multiple schemes. We're gonna be going back to the drawing board over and over as we receive input, both from the city and from the community. And then we're gonna come and give updates like we're doing tonight. And you know, as we get a little further on, those updates will include some, some actually concepts and drawings. And really, the whole goal of this is to build consensus. And so as I think both Leila and Jesse said, we're gonna be looking at multiple options and carrying those through this process that we can then put really solid numbers to with the help of general contractor and evaluate kind of holistically as we look at them together. So the goal of this process is really to kind of, as I said, build some trust, manage some expectations, avoid some surprises, and hopefully build a consensus along the way. And this is kind of the roadmap that we've been using and will be using. It'll probably get adjusted as we move forward. I'm not sure if you can see my cursor on the screen, but the kind of this line here with the yellow on it, we've kind of begun. We are under contract now. We've had a couple of meetings already with city and the police department to start to drill down on what really is the essential program that is required for this building to be useful to its inhabitants, right? We're trying to start with a very pared-down base building program as a starting point. So we've been working on that. And as you can see here on the 29th, this top line is a series of community meetings that Jesse alluded to. First one is scheduled now for the 29th of this month. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna have a meeting. We're gonna do some work. We're gonna come back to the public with that work. We're gonna go back and do some more work feed, and it'll be a feedback loop, hopefully that is moving in a direction that everyone is comfortable with, and that builds consensus along the way. So that's kind of where we are. We're really just at the beginning of the process. We're kind of excited to be up and running now and really looking forward to this first public meeting. And as Jesse said, that really is gonna be an introduction to the design team. It's gonna be an opportunity for us to listen to the community. And we'll probably try to generate an exercise or two to facilitate a conversation, both about the site and the long-term goals for the project. And so we'll, we'll probably distribute an agenda for that meeting beforehand. And so that's something to be looking out for. So that's really where we are, and kind of a recap of what we've done to date. Is that does that sound about right to you, Leila and Jesse?
Yeah, it does. Thanks, Chris.
Any questions from the council for on this project? Do you have any questions from the public?
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody. It sounds like we're we're getting on track. You just have to stay on track and keep going, I guess. We'll get there eventually.
Yeah, it's really going well.
It's really exciting. I think one thing I would point out that's probably different than the process that happened before is that this is the team that will will build the building. So what the process the community went through before, while we are starting from scratch, you know, Chris and his team did have access to that information and it really did inform a lot of the you know, it gave them a starting point and a real understanding of some of the work that's been done in the past, but our needs have changed. The world has changed. And so we've been really focusing on a very practical space that meets the community and the staff's needs. So the other difference too is that the design process, while useful, was really aspirational and more of a higher level look at what many options could be. This is more, this is a real process that will actually lead to the construction of a facility. So that's a big reason why this team is really taking a hard look at everything that's been done. We're doing additional due diligence on existing structures on the site. We'll be doing our geotechnical work here pretty soon. So this is really a real process and we will bring on a contractor, that contractor, the CMGC process, which we discussed a while back. What's different between that and a straight up bid process is that contractor will ultimately be the contractor who builds this building. And so the relationship that we start to form with this contractor is essential to our success. So I just wanted to add that level of information because I know probably some folks in the community are wondering like, haven't we done this before? And the answer is no. You have not. This is what leads to a real project. So we're not just visioning and hoping. We are really starting with the constraints that we know we have and working collaboratively with the experts here, having Jesse, Chris, and then our future contractor. Those folks will be able to give us hard numbers that will allow us to make more informed decisions about real next steps. So I just wanted to highlight that piece of it because it is different than the process that the community went through before. That work was not wasted, but it did help kind of kick us off. But given the reality of the world that we live in today, it's really been essential that we take a very practical and meaningful look at this. And if you'll recall, this council has had multiple discussions about sort of the level of resources that we have. And so we're also starting with that sort of realistic budget framework in mind as well. So and as you all know, I'm very dogged about how we spend our resources. And so what I'm really pleased about having this kind of process in place and I have seen it work is that we have a target value design approach. And so we're not saying, here's all the stuff we want. We're saying we've got this. And here's the stuff we need. And then we can start to talk about other things that we may want if we can really make them work. So I'm really excited about having this this team together and look forward to November, when we're able to put forward a CMGC and that will complete the circle and really get us moving in a very realistic fashion. So just wanted to offer that additional perspective for folks that are out there.
Well, thank you for the update. And thank you, guys, for coming in and joining us tonight and giving us that. I'm sure we'll hear from you some more in the future, so.
Indeed. Thanks to you both. Appreciate you being here tonight.
All right. Good night.
Good night. Let's move on to our next item, the homeless pilot project IGA. And Leila, I'm turning it that one over to you, too.
Yeah, it's all me. So we talked about this with Commissioner Scar came and visited us a couple of months ago. And at that time asked us to provide a letter of support for House Bill forty one twenty three, which would provide a certain number of counties throughout the state, a million dollars to establish a homeless pilot project, which would deal with sort of establishing a strategic plan to address homelessness in our county. And since that time, the during the short session this year, the legislature did approve that House bill and the county of Tillamook was successfully awarded that resource. So I received an IGA from them and they have asked us to approve that. I've included it in your package in the packet. And what I'm asking tonight for is for council to make a motion to authorize us to, I believe the mayor will sign this, to approve that intergovernmental agreement with the county to do this work. Our role will be participating in roughly about five hours of meetings a month. I will be engaged in that effort, but I've also been working with Chief Hearth, who will also play a role in this. And the reason for that is is that the chief and our officers are typically on the front lines when we're dealing with houselessness folks in our community. And I believe that the chief will have some very interesting perspective to offer policymakers who may not be sort of out there, literally on the streets, working with these people. So Chief Hearth has been open to that. And as appropriate, he will be engaged in this process with us. And if there are folks on council who have an interest as well to participate, I would welcome that. But I do believe this kind of work is essential. Dealing with houselessness is something that is not. It has no borders. And so I believe very strongly in the approach and I believe with the leadership of the commission, particularly Commissioner Scar, that we will develop a strategy that will be implementable and effective. So I strongly support our involvement in this. I think when we discussed this as a council a few months ago, the council was also strongly in support of that. So tonight I would just ask for your support to sign this agreement.
I assume everybody's had a chance to read this and I think we saw it before, too. So any questions from the council for Leila on what we're doing here?
It's a good idea.
Is there any questions from the public?
I do not see any hands raised.
Well, why didn't somebody give me a motion to approve this IGA agreement?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. Go back to my list here. Make a motion to approve a memorandum of agreement for the coordinated homeless response system between the city of Manzanita and Tillamook County.
Give Linda the second.
Sure.
All in favor of the homeless project IGA's say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So we're moving right along here tonight. We're moving down to item E now, the town hall update, and it's back to you again, Leila.
Yeah, it's not a business meeting for nothing. We're getting things done tonight. Thank you. So I just wanted to provide sort of a brief update. I think I was down for the count last week, so I didn't get as far as I had hoped with putting together information, but I just wanted to give sort of a high level overview anyway. So we held two town hall meetings on August, sorry, July thirteenth and July twentieth. We also had an online survey available to folks during that time, which I extended to the end of the month. So in terms of participation, this is one of the better outreach processes I've been involved with in my career, statistically speaking. We had seventy four people submit fairly detailed information through the online survey, which is wonderful. I've managed to compile about a third of that and I have twenty seven pages of notes. So a lot of good reading, a lot of redundancy, but that's cool. But there's also just a lot of really good information in there. And just so folks know, all of that information will be made public. We also had to, again, the two town halls. We had fifty seven participants attend in person on to the first town hall meeting. And then thirty two people attended the second town hall meeting as well. And so that's, I think, excellent turnout. At those meetings, we had, it was a little bit more analog, which is the way I like doing things. So we had just topics all around. We held them at the Pine Grove Community House. I want to give a shout out to the Pine Grove Community House. They've been really great and helpful. And we had just the major topics. Many of these align with the comprehensive plan issues, and we just had folks writing up issues that mattered to them. And the approach was intentionally open ended. I did get some feedback from a couple of folks in the online survey saying, we wish you'd structured it more. And I totally get that. But part of what I was hoping to do with this is to really listen and to to give people an opportunity to actually think through the things that mattered to them and to write them down and to take something from, you know, it's one thing to be given sort of a multiple choice action. It's quite another to think about the things that matter and formulate those into words. And I found, I hope, and many conversations I had with folks that they found it useful and productive. We also at the on online, I'm sorry, in in person meetings, we gave people dots, which were just little sticky dots. So if somebody else put up an idea that resonated with them, they could stick a dot on there. And so when we come back to council and I'm aiming for September to do this, we'll provide sort of a summary of all of what we heard and themes and so forth. And we'll show some pictures of of those 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 sheets. But there was a lot of, a lot of consensus around many, many things. Many of the things, too, that in reading this, I learned there's a lot of education that we may need to do as an outcome of this. I use an example recently. Someone had written down that as it relates to funding and someone said something to the effect of, you know, we need to charge developers more for system development charges and we shouldn't be raising fees on local folks to deal with maintenance. Well, that's totally understandable. And if you haven't worked in local government, it makes complete sense why you might think that. But folks may not understand or appreciate that system development charges actually have very specific requirements and legal restrictions on what they can be used for. So we can charge developers fees, but those fees can only be used for expansion of the system. They can't be used for maintenance. And so when we start talking about fees to deal with maintenance, we have to find other ways to do that. So so the information we're gathering is really helpful in terms of understanding how we can better educate people to help both the council and the community better understand some of the big decisions that we're going to be making over the next many months and year. And also, the information is going to be invaluable and informing policy that the council will be making, how we update our comprehensive plan. So the information that I'm gleaning from this, and this is actually something I've done in a previous life, is taking community feedback and starting to pull that into themes that we can start to build meaningful policy around that will lead to implementation of those policies. And so what I'm seeing so far is just a really rich data set of information. One of the other things that we collected, because I know it's it's important to people, and I think it's important for us to understand who we're hearing from. So I asked folks and I really appreciate everyone who both participated online and in person answered every question that we asked. And so we asked people, who are you? Are you a voter? Do you own a home? Do you rent? Are you a business owner? Are you an employee? And if you're something else, what are you? And tell us. And we had, I think, a total participation was somewhere in a hundred and forty range. Eighty seven of those were voters, which represents fifteen percent of our electorate. That's significant. That's statistically significant. And that really represents the lion's share of the folks that participated. We also had a hundred and twenty nine homeowners. So if you do the math, eighty seven of those, I think it was only a handful of folks that were voters, maybe two that were renters. So we got, you know, that can be a proxy for second homeowners who live in Manzanita. We had eight renters participate. So that tells us something as well is that we probably don't have a large renter population and the census bears that out. But we did hear from some folks. And we had six business owners who participated and five folks who identified as being employees. And then there was just a small handful of people who were not voters, but they lived in our urban growth boundary, or they were, I think we had two Neakani residents. So what I take away from that is that we got a significant amount of information from folks who consider themselves full time voting residents. And I know that that's a priority for this council in terms of understanding what those folks are interested in, as well as a significant showing of second homeowners. And so I feel like the information that we will glean from this will be, like I've said, just invaluable in terms of helping this council and the future council make informed decisions about policies, how we update our comprehensive plan. So this gives me a very clear roadmap in terms of the chapters of that plan that we should be prioritizing. And the main issues within them that we should be addressing. So I was just, I have to just give a shout out to the community members who showed up, who took the time. I think one of the other side benefits of these in person meetings was the conversations that I witnessed happening not only between staff. I also want to thank the staff. I had Chief Hearth was there, Officer Mike Sims participated in both. Our building official, Scott Gebhardt, was there. Dan Weitzel was there. And then our county manager, Nina Iello, participated. So we also got to, and I was there as well. And then I had hired Kelly Roy, who assisted with setting these things up. And we had lots of conversations with folks in the community and the community had conversations with each other. So it was really, I think, a very valuable experience for me personally. And I and I hope that community members also felt heard and know that this information is not just going into a file somewhere. It's going to be actively part of the conversations that we will be having over the next several years as we move forward with some very big and very important work. So this one thing I think I would highlight, and we had a discussion about this earlier. So folks are here tonight that weren't here earlier. We had a really good discussion around the tax abatement program for workforce housing. I feel like from what I've read from both the online surveys and what I saw at the town halls is that the community has given us a mandate to address that issue. I knew it in my gut when I got here, but it means a heck of a lot more when that is reflected in the values that our community is putting forward. So I just wanted to share that. It's just a brief update. Really happy with the turnout and just really grateful that we have such a engaged and thoughtful community that clearly care about our environment, our businesses, our our workers here, and then the quality of life that exists in this community. And how do we sustain and improve that? So I really look forward to taking that information and working with this council and the next to level our city up and start to envision our future as we start to update these very important both guiding documents and the implementing ordinances such as our zoning code to reflect these values more accurately.
Well, great. So the the plan is you're going to present some of this information hopefully by September, if you get the time to put it all together, right?
We'll make it work. Yes. So we plan So we plan to do, yeah, an updated council. And then I have scheduled another sort of town hall type event on, I believe it's September ninth. We'll, we'll present this back to the community and get feedback on what we heard and get some feedback in terms of, did we get it right? You know, I will say it's hard to distill down what will probably be ninety pages of feedback. But we're trying to get to sort of high-level policy themes that can then inform how we move forward. So this is really the first step in that process.
Okay, great. Well, thank, thank you for that update. Well, let's move on to the next item. We got the voter's pamphlet to talk about. I'm going to turn it over to Jerry, so Leila doesn't have to talk again.
Tired.
I may bring her into the conversation now. So the last time that we talked about the voters pamphlet, council wanted me to get some more information from, at that point, I was relying heavily on the assistant city manager in Roseburg, who has successfully done a pamphlet down there for several election cycles. And prior to that, she had done it in Springfield. So you asked for more information about her process and work with Laila to make sure that it lined up with our capacity to pull it off in a, in a easy and inexpensive manner. So I think in the packet you have a document from Roseburg, which is sort of their informational letter to candidates about their process. The highlights of their process is that all candidates are listed in their online voter pamphlet. Only those who elect to submit a statement will have additional information provided. The fee for including a statement is twenty-five dollars. The word limit is three hundred and seven, three hundred and twenty-five words. The pamphlet tracks the tradition in Oregon, which is to require certain information about occupational background and educational background, and then allow for a candidate to make a, a statement on their behalf, on behalf of their candidacy. So that all that information together would be three hundred and twenty-five words. The occupational and, and educational information comes right off the SCL 101, which candidates are required to file anyway when they run for office. So that information is already publicly required. And now we're just proposing that it be publicly shared. And then the candidate can use whatever amount of their word length limit they have left to advocate for their candidacy. The thinking, Leila and I have talked about this. The thinking is that if we can get it up on the website shortly after the ballot is set in early September, it can reside there on the website throughout the campaign season. And we can circulate, or excuse me, advertise the existence of the voter pamphlet online in the fall water bill circular, which will also tell people that printed copies are available. We anticipate that a relatively small number of folks will prefer to have a printed copy of the, of the voter's pamphlet. So based on the experience in, in Roseburg, the nominal amount of money collected from candidates participating will cover to a large extent the minimal amount of staff support required to collect the information and, and, and post it. Candidates provide the content. So it's just a question of putting the content into a template that Roseburg has developed and posting it online. You know, if Josh were here, he could tell me how quick and easy that process would be, but I assume it's relatively painless. And so that is all I have on the voter's pamphlet as we've previously discussed. Now, there is, I think we all got an email from Leila about a sort of Plan B that is out there. Linda and I talked about this briefly this afternoon. As you know from previous discussions, this voter's pamphlet idea was certainly not an original idea of mine. It was something that the Tillamook Democracy Project has been pushing and has been advocating jurisdiction by jurisdiction. And they've gotten several of the cities in the county to agree to do a pamphlet. They ran into some opposition in a couple of places. And then they came up with an alternative, which would be to have the Headlight Herald do a county-wide voter's pamphlet. And apparently the Headlight Herald is going to go ahead and do that. So our candidates here in Manzanita would be included in that. But they would also be included with every other local elective office contest throughout the county. And of course, that publication would just be distributed on a one-time basis, paper copy. So frankly, I believe, and I think Linda agreed with me, that it is a better service to the voters of Manzanita to have information about their candidates posted online and available for voters to consider throughout the entire season. But in addition to whatever we do online, there will be this countywide effort by the Headlight Herald distributed. Headlight Herald, yeah.
I get a couple of questions, Jerry. So the Headlight Herald, when the candidates would have to provide their information and opt into that, probably.
Yes, actually, Leila, I think you have the proposal that's floating out there from the Headlight Herald. They may be asking the, the cities to provide some basic information about the candidates.
Okay.
But the candidates will control the content, yes.
Yeah, it's a little different than the, the Roseburg version. I could share my screen and I apologize, I didn't get this out sooner. And I'll post it to the packet page. But would it be helpful to share the screen and we can look at the requirements?
I, I had another quick question. I can't remember, did that provide an option? They could provide a picture or does this?
Yes, I'm sorry, you're right. A picture is expected. They don't have to, but then, and then of course, the requirements regarding size and.
But it has to be less than four years old. I like that.
Yeah, I mean, my suggestion would be that we use the candidate statement outline here so then we can dual-purpose that and create our own. As Councillor Spengman mentioned, Josh just texted me and said, no problem. It's takes five minutes to, to put something online. So if we had this be the same, then that way we can just take what the candidates provide and just shift that over to the Headlight Herald to include in their, and their, in their, their format. So that would be just my request is that that way we're just having the same. We lay it out on our own and have our own available online on our website. But then we would just also provide the information to the Herald. There's also a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar cost for the city. So it'd be good to give direction, get direction from council if they support that. And we could, you know, that's, I think, a worthy endeavor.
So that's two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to include our candidates in the Headlight Herald publication? Is that the idea?
That's, that's how I'm reading this, yeah.
I, I will add, I'm not advocating this, but I will add that our candidates will be in there, whether we pony up the two-fifty or not. I mean, the, the two-fifty is the Headlight Herald's suggestion on if we would buy an ad, which Linda and I talked about, the ad could say anything. We could advertise, you know, upcoming events in Manzanita. We could wish people a happy Halloween. We could do whatever we want with the ad. But the, the ad revenue is designed to help the Herald perform, perform this public service.
Okay. Okay, well, what do you guys want to do? What do you think, Linda, Steve?
I think we should do both. I think, I think the better and the more information we have out to the voters, the better informed the voters are, the more information they have as they make their choice, I think is really important.
Well, it doesn't sound like it's going to be much of a heavy lift if Josh can just put this stuff up online.
Right.
It's not like, it's not like we're going to have fifty candidates or something, so.
I like the option of both. I think it's nice to have it on, on the website and then available to everyone. I think it's.
You could tell candidates for twenty-five bucks that we're going to put it online and we'll also provide your information. We'll make sure you're included in the Headlight Herald's publication too.
Yeah.
I, I assume that's what you're thinking. What do you think, Steve?
Sounds like a plan to me. You know, not a lot of money invested in the information getting out there, I think, is, is important. I do have some concerns about, and they were diminished somewhat by our attorney during our last discussion. But whatever we do, we need to recognize this probably will be a, for a launch of something that will go on into the foreseeable future. So whatever guidelines we put together, we should be thinking about that because it won't be just this election. It'll be every election that we hold from here on out. But I think it's a good plan, good idea. And thank you, Jerry, for both spearheading and doing the research necessary to get this going.
We have consensus to do this. Do you need a formal motion, Leila, to go forward with this or just consensus, do you think?
Why not?
Why not what consensus?
Why not give a motion?
A motion, why doesn't somebody give me a motion then?
Sure, I, I moved the City of Manzanita publish a voter's pamphlet electronically on its website and participate in the Headlight Herald, county-wide voter's pamphlet.
Okay, second?
Second.
Seconded by Linda, all in favor of doing a voter's pamphlet electronically, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Hey, that passes unanimously. Moving right along tonight, guys. Moving down to item G now, League of Oregon Cities Legislative Priorities Ballot, which we spent some time on this afternoon. Leila, where we're at on that?
Well, thank you, council. So we had, again, for folks that were not part of the discussion earlier, the council had a discussion about the priorities. So the League of Oregon Cities asks local jurisdictions to identify their top five priorities that the league would then advocate for during the next legislative session. So each council member and also myself sort of independently reviewed the list of priorities, which were included in the work session packet. So if you're interested in reviewing that, you can find that on our website. And each councillor and mayor provided me independently their list. We all agreed on the top three being property tax reform. So again, this is, again, the, the limitation that we have in terms of property taxes being stuck between the Measure Fifty and Five sandwich, lodging tax flexibility. So this would be trying to find additional flexibility for the restricted funds that are used for tourism promotion, infrastructure funding to support needed housing, full funding and alignment. So those were the three that all four councillors agreed on and were also on my top list. And then we went through a list of additional ones that each councillor had identified and came to consensus on two additional priorities, being full funding and alignment for state land use initiatives. So this would be supporting and finding resources for small and other jurisdictions to implement state land use initiatives and then infrastructure financing and resilience. So LOC would advocate for those. And that's specific to water and wastewater infrastructure. So those are the top five priorities that the council provided consensus on. And I will be submitting our city ballot tomorrow with these top five priorities if the council so moves.
So just so that, put some context into this. The League of Oregon Cities asks all two-hundred-and-fifty-some-odd cities in Oregon for what their issues are every year. And it gives them some sort of a template as to where to put their lobbying efforts on our behalf in front of the state legislature. So that's what this is all about. So any other discussion on this? We talked about this, some length this afternoon, so. Maybe I, I'll need another motion to, to give Leila the authority to submit those five items to the League of Oregon Cities tomorrow before the deadline.
I make a motion that we submit the five identified to the League of Oregon Cities for, for our, for our input.
Second by Jerry, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Want to oppose, say nay. Okay, that passes unanimously. So we have two items of old business to talk about next. First item is short-term rental committee policy direction. And Leila, I'm going to turn it over to you again.
Thank you. So we also had a good discussion about this at the workshop, work session earlier. And what we, I believe, kind of came to consensus with our discussion is that we have our kickoff meeting with the Short Term Rental Committee tomorrow. And myself and Councillor Spengman will be involved in those meetings. And what I had originally asked council for was sort of direction on the charge for that committee. And what I believe we ended up landing on is we will spend some time with the committee to both provide sort of the background and get folks up to speed with the work that has already been done. Then we would work with the committee to identify some priorities in terms of what the next steps will be and the charge for that committee will be. And we will bring that back to the city council as a starting point for, for that work to begin. One of the other things that we also discussed at the workshop as well was the three strikes and you're out discussion. So we provided some statistics in the work session packet about the length of time that folks have held short-term rental licenses. That was some information that the council had asked for previously and determined that we should take that information to the Short Term Rental Committee to get feedback, to provide a recommendation to the city council as to whether or not to amend that ordinance. So I believe at this point, the kind of ball is in both Councillor Spengman and my court to work with the committee to establish the charge for the upcoming work and to move forward with addressing particularly the issues related to density and its relationship to our finances, as well as the livability issues that we will be looking at as we advance work on the comprehensive plan. Councillor Spengman, is there anything I missed or you would like to add or elaborate on that?
No, I thought we had a great and lengthy conversation this afternoon. And I think we'll be coming back to council, hopefully in September, maybe in October, with a more precise request for a charge. We can manage that.
Any other discussion on that with anybody? I think we kind of chewed that to death this afternoon. We'll look forward to, and Jerry figuring this out, bringing it back to us in a month or so.
Great. Well, and related to that too, just to clarify, we also have two additional at-large positions that we will be needing to fill. And that's related to our next topic, which is the proposed process for appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. And so what we've committed to do is to use this process, but using the folks, the applications that we already had, that was the intent of adding those two additional positions as a starting point. And we will be coming back to the council with some proposed selection criteria for approval in September. We will conduct interviews and bring back the additional two members for approval of the council in November. So that's related to our next topic item that, assuming we adopt this or some version of this tonight, that will be the process that Councillor Spengman and I will use to round out the committee.
Why don't we move right on to that last topic and how the selection, committee selection process?
Excuse me. Great. So also included in your packet is a proposal for amending. a proposal for amending the council rules of procedure, chapter eight appointments. Sorry, so I thought I had the redline version, but this is the clean version. So previously, the current chapter eight basically gives full authority to the mayor to both select and appoint folks to commissions and committees. So we've had a number of discussions over the last year, and the city has really sort of changed our approach to be more inclusive and to widen the net, so to speak, in terms of who and how we select folks for these boards, commissions and committees. So we've had multiple discussions in work sessions and in our regular sessions. And so I've done my best to reflect the last round of feedback that I got from the council. So this is the the draft based on that feedback. And so what I'll do is just kind of go through this and would welcome any changes or suggestions for clarification. Ultimately, and ideally, we can make a motion to amend the rules and regulations to reflect this new process. And then, like I said, we'll actually use that process to appoint the two additional members to the Short Term Rental Committee. We'll also then kick off our process for our budget revenue diversification committee. And then we also have a couple of positions that will be opening up on the Planning Commission in December. So this will also set the stage for us to start doing that work as well. So it's it's pretty, pretty timely in terms of where we are. So section two, so section one, chapter eight, the council appoints and removes. So this is related to city staff. There's been no change here. But section two is is significantly different. So I basically erased everything that was already there, and we have replaced it with this approach. So what we talked about is the mayor appointing a member of council to lead a committee selection process. So, for example, and we've sort of been loosely following this approach. We selected the mayor selected councillor Spengman to lead the Short Term Rental Committee selection process. That selected councillor will then be charged with developing selection criteria for the committee if none exists. So we currently don't really have any specific criteria at this time. Or if necessary, and this is I'm really pretty dogged about having processes that we can both review and revise as needed because things do change over time. So they would either establish new selection criteria or review and revise if necessary or confirm existing selection criteria. So, for example, when we move to do the process for the Planning Commission, we will set criteria at that time. And for the following year, we may just elect to use that criteria again. Or if the councillor determines that, you know, we learned something through that interview process, we'd like to amend it, we would make that adjustment at that time. So so that's the purpose of this is we establish criteria and that gets reviewed and finalized by the city council. At the regular meeting, the mayor reviews and finalizes that criteria for the selection process and then delegates authority to establish a selection committee per the section below. That selection committee will then conduct the process outlined in section D below. So is that tracking so far with folks? Cool. So section C is the committee selection process. So in addition to that councillor, so the committee shall include one member of city council as appointed as above. It should include the city manager or designee. So in most cases, it will be the city manager, but if there is a subject matter expert, for example, that we want, for example, if we end up having a committee on public safety, Chief Hearth might be a better fit for that than myself. So we would determine that at that time. And then the committee may include a third member designated by the appointed city councillor, city manager or designee. So we would determine what that should be. Should it be a third member of staff? Could it be an existing committee member or other member of the public? And so we would have a three-person ultimately selection committee. And then section D is going through the selection process. So using the criteria that we establish and approve at the council level, the city will post an application on the city's website for at least three weeks. That gives folks enough time to learn about it, for us to get the information out and to give folks adequate time to submit their credentials. When the action application period is closed, each member of the selection committee reviews those applications independently. And using that selection criteria to do the evaluation. The selection committee will then meet and review those applications as a committee and then determine a shortlist of potential candidates. That shortlist will then be interviewed and the committee will work together to establish interview questions and then interview those candidates. The selection committee will then, through that process, through consensus, make a recommendation and provide that to the mayor, a slate to be appointed at the next council meeting. And then the mayor ultimately appoints that committee based on the committee recommendation. And that's the proposed process. The removals originally said all appointed persons may be removed by the mayor or majority of council, and I maintained that language. Although the formatting is off and that's annoying, so I'm sorry about that.
Can I make a couple of comments on this?
For sure.
Well, as I am the current mayor, I've been the mayor for six years and I have a few more months to go before the end of my term, and my predecessor, Gary Bullard, who was mayor for ten years. We worked under the old process where the mayor basically made the appointments. And it basically worked pretty well, and I understand things are changing and we want to get the council more involved. And the thing that struck me was the last line that says people can be removed by the mayor or a majority of the council. And and I can tell you, the years I've been mayor, I've had to remove some people from various committees. And the way it was done was was pretty much privately, usually because they weren't attending meetings, they weren't up to the job, whatever. And I quietly counselled them and unanimously they resigned after I talked to them, and it was done quietly without a lot of fanfare and fuss. I I just wonder how this is going to work if we have somebody that fits in that category. And all of a sudden, the council, we're going to have to have a public meeting and talk about somebody in public and then remove them from a from a committee or something. I I don't know. That that just seems cumbersome to me. This whole process is very good. It's going to it's going to involve more work for the council. It's going to be more public and there'll be more input, and it probably will work better than the way it was done in the old days. But I worry about that last item. I didn't. I don't know what to do about it. I mean, you're basically, you're taking away the mayor's responsibility to appoint people, but you're leaving them with the dirty job of removing people that don't work out. Right? And you can do that. I mean, just, I I I think it might be cumbersome if you have to have a majority of the council to retire somebody from a committee. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm open to whatever the council wants. It's currently written as or. But that can that's up to you.
You can leave it like that, the, you know, I or the next mayor that comes in at the first of the year, they'll
Wait, wait.
Remove, you got to remove them, huh?
Yeah, since that language has already been in there, my assumption is that the the way it's been done primarily has been a mayor individually removing someone. The or language, I think, gives a majority of the of the council the option to remove somebody if that's the will of the majority and the mayor is not acting. If the mayor the mayor is not stepping up and doing it, then the majority council can do it instead. The only, I I think the proposed language looks really good. I'm just not sure about that. The selection committee, there's two mandatory members, and then the third member. We use the word may instead of shall, but you did say you want a three-person selection committee, right?
Yeah, and I I'm open to having that say shall.
Yeah.
But we didn't explicitly discuss it, so that would be a totally good change. And I also just want to clarify, I misspoke. The current rules actually say all appointed persons may be removed by the mayor, period. So I I added the or a majority of city council for the reason that councillor Spengman just identified. So it maintains that flexibility, Mayor Scott. But it also allows the other members of council, if they find that someone is not performing their duties, then they have the option to address that.
Well, I I would leave it the way it is, just understanding that whoever the mayor is and has the options to hook somebody to lunch and say, you're not doing your job on the planning commission, and I'd like you to resign. And trust me, I've had to do that on more than one occasion. And you don't have to make a big public issue about it or anything. You just take care of it. And then if something, as you say, Jerry, if the mayor doesn't do it, and it becomes obviously as a problem, the council, mine's going to have to take the bull by the horns and do it yourself in more of a public fashion, I guess.
There are a lot of things in our rules that look scary, but we never have to do them.
Here you.
Should we? Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, no, if you well, if you finish your comment, if it's specific to the mayor's.
Oh, I just wanted to didn't want to lose the thread from councillor Spengman about changing may to shall for the third member. If folks are comfortable with that, we can just do that.
Can you bring back the language again on screen? I have a couple of concerns. My first concern probably is how well this follows the charter language, because the charter does have very specific language about appointments. And I'm a little, I have concerns about the letter G. Specifically where it says the mayor shall appoint the committee based on the committee recommendation at the next available meeting. So essentially, you're taking away the ability of the mayor to make the decision. You're giving it to the committee. Now, as I under, at least it's how I read that. As I, as I reflect on why we are here, it was my assumption and impression that we wanted to beef up the process that was that was done to select people. Rather than just somebody making that decision based upon somebody you know, or in the old days, it was trying to twist somebody's arm to be a participant. But more recently, we've had lots of folks applying. And we were trying to beef up, I thought, the process of doing some interviews and actually giving an application process and and kind of just strengthening community involvement in it. I feel like in some respects, we've taken it one step too far in if in fact G represents that the mayor shall appoint the committee based on the committee recommendation. It doesn't say that they can consider the committee recommendation. They says they shall appoint the committee based on the committee recommendation. So I'd like to soften that language, maybe use the word can consider. Because I do think that the that the charter is has very specific language, and I'd have to have to defer to the city attorney, but my guess would be the city attorney will tell you that the charter trumps any rules and regulations that we create.
Can you? Yeah, that's a great point. I have two comments to add. Can you see the charter now?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so when we talked about this previously, the reason why I recommended we change the regulations, the rules and regulations is that because the charter references the rules of the council. And so that's what the city's procedures for council meetings. So that was my recommendation. The last time we met was that we, because the charter makes it the authority of the mayor, we then sort of defer that to the council rules of procedure. Because we can change those a lot easier than we can change the charter. So so that's one thing. And I'm comfortable with what you're suggesting with respect to okay, now I don't know what I'm showing anymore. The language.
Stay there for just. I think it's, I think it's a worthy discussion, and and here's why. I'm not an attorney. Jerry's an attorney. Maybe he will weigh in. I don't know if this is in his bailiwick or not, but my experience tells me that when you have a very specific clause in the charter or a constitution or bylaws or what have you, that administrative rules will be trumped by something that's like a charter, for example. And in this charter, say, the mayor shall appoint a committee provided for under the rules of, well, okay, all right, you're right. I missed the rules part. So if we create the rules, I guess we have the latitude to do what we want to do.
That was that was sort of my thinking and.
Yeah, I missed, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's cool. And I think one of the other things, and I just want to make sure I heard everybody correctly, was we had talked about having a little bit looser language in there, but there was some concern about putting the mayor in a position where they would not want to appoint the slate. And so that's where council directed me to make it so that the criteria was approved by the council so that the slate that's presented would not put the mayor in that position. So that's that was the sort of logic behind that. But again, this is your call, so I'm open to making any adjustments.
Well, here's where here's my concern about it is essentially under the under the process that we've defined, a city council person along with potentially a staff member could be dictating who gets appointed to the committee rather than the mayor. I mean, that's. Sorry.
Siri didn't quite catch that.
My female companion. So I I basically were transferring the the authority of appointing a committee to a the council member who's been placed on the selection committee along with potentially two others, but it could be as as little as one staff member. And under these rules, again, I would just urge us to consider making it a little more flexible that the mayor has the discretion to make the appointment based upon his or her decision process, and they're not confined necessarily to the committee recommendation. Otherwise, I could see you could have, I mean, this council is very friendly and we all get along and everything is wonderful. But if you read the stories of other councils or cities that deal with difficulties, I could see how you could end up with some real conflict between a council member who wants someone on a committee versus the mayor who either he or she feels differently, or maybe there's sound reason why you don't want to do that. Anyway, I'll stop talking.
Well, I I think, Leila, I'm not sure what the words would be, but I think you could probably could soften G slightly to stay consistent with the general meaning of it, but allow for the mayor to have the discretion to essentially to to veto the committee selection process if needed. I mean, I I again, I would I don't think it's going to take too much. The word shall is the problem for Steve, and I understand why. And and I I I agree, although you're right, that the the charter does refer to the rules. So I think it's just probably a good idea to figure out a way to soften G slightly.
Well, one.
I mean, I think most mayors, honestly, after doing the work involved in creating the process and the criteria and and having the process go forward, those mayors are going to be are going to welcome the the recommendation of of the committee. But Steve's right, there certainly could be a situation in which there's good reason for the mayor to you know, want to go in a different direction and.
Yeah, totally. And I think the original proposal I had actually had it more flexible, and then we discussed a different approach. So maybe one way to do it is to drop G and say the selection committee shall provide the mayor with a slate for consideration for appointment at the next. for consideration um, for appointment at the next available city council meeting. And then that.
Yeah.
By adding consideration sort of implies they don't have to do anything. They can say, I don't want this slate, you need to go back to the drawing board and come back to me with something different. Um, so that, would that do it?
Right, so you wouldn't be dropping G, you would just be changing G to um, get rid of the words, the mayor shall appoint, just say the committee uh, shall recommend, whatever, I mean.
I think she's suggesting get rid of G, which I like, and just concluding it with F with some modified F language.
Yeah, so I was, yeah, that's correct. So the selection committee shall provide the mayor with a slate um, for consideration at the next available council meeting.
Right.
I think that provides the checks and balances that we um, really should have in his.
Yep.
And I li, I like that. Yeah, again, I'm, I'm going back to the why we're here and why we are moving in this direction. And part of it was to institutionalize some sort of a process in the selection, rather than just finding somebody and appointing them. We wanted to have interviews, we wanted to have experience. We wanted to have the kinds of things you want, you know, that a community would like to see representing them on committees. And I think we've done that with this. And I like the fact that there's some flexibility going forward in terms of the decision process, and it is, isn't all put in the lap of one particular person.
Yeah, I, what I like is that the council and the mayor have a thoughtful discussion about criteria. So, and that happens in a public forum, which allows the community to understand sort of the logic behind why and how we're selecting people. Um, so I, I appreciate and like that transparency. And then um, having a robust discussion about that, having a three person committee uh, gives you some various perspectives and then using this process um, provides applicants uh, some clarity around how the process will be conducted. So, um, yeah, I think it's, I think it's good.
Did, did we stick with the shell on number CC?
Oh, I just changed it. Are folks comfortable with that?
I, I love, I think the shell is the appropriate word for me. I just want to make sure.
I have a little problem with CC in terms of the, the um, the makeup of the committee. We have, essentially we're saying a council person and a city manager or designee, which makes sense. It seems to me the third member should come from the committee itself. As opposed to the option of another staff member or a.
Okay, okay. Um, well, the how would that, that's, I hear what you're saying, uh, councillor, and I think that's, let's talk about that. Um, how would we do it if we don't have a committee already? Because we'll be establishing some new committees. That works with standing committees. So for example, now that we have a short term rental committee, we can probably pull somebody from that committee to help us select the next two people. But when we say, um, you know, I plan to establish, work with the council to establish a comprehensive plan advisory committee, we won't have a committee at that time. So, um, I hear what you're saying. Um, I think that generally that'll work for existing committees, but what do we do when we don't have um, an existing committee? I, I wanted there to be some flexibility that it's perhaps a staff person that has some expertise or another member of the community at large, perhaps, that has some specific um, experience that isn't going to apply for the committee but wants to participate. So I'm open, um, but that's why that was in there.
Well, I, I would, I would suggest that, uh, obviously where there is a committee, you, the third person can be from the committee. Where there's not a committee, maybe we could just draft somebody from an existing committee.
Okay.
You know, somebody who's already demonstrated a commitment to the city and understands committee process and governance might be a good perspective.
Language in the last word says or other, that almost makes it sound like it would be anybody from the community, right? If need be.
I think that, that's fine. I, I just think when possible, representation from the committee is critical. Uh, or even as Jerry suggested, uh, using another committee member to be part of the initial process.
If there is sort of consensus around that idea, I could suggest, you know, we add language that says where possible uh, the third member can be a member of an existing of an existing committee. And that would imply both the, if it's a new committee, that would imply someone on an existing committee, whether it's, you know, if we're establishing, for example, in my mind, if we're establishing the comprehensive plan advisory committee, I'd like someone from planning commission to be on that selection, because that's not a committee that will last forever, it will only be during that process. Whereas if we're selecting someone for the planning commission, we would want what I'm hearing the council say today is that we would want a member of planning commission on that selection committee. Is that what I'm hearing? So would that, does that language seem clear enough? So where possible, um, or this shall include a third member of an existing committee would also be. Um, and then that would give us flexibility to, to determine that.
How about recommended by the committee? If there's an existing committee.
Now I gotta see how well I spelled. I always do two Cs, it's third member recommended by an existing committee? Or a standing? I love editing alive. Um.
Yeah.
Are you, uh, Leila, are you uh, thinking you want to formalize this tonight by an adoption by the council?
I'd love that if it's possible, so Jerry and I can get moving on, um, finalizing the short term rental committee and the budget revenue committee. But if we want to come back next month, that's, that's also fine.
Oh, it's, either way, I just know sometimes it's dangerous to write code on the floor, as we used to.
Yeah. This isn't super deep, so I'm okay with it. What about a third member of an existing committee? And then it's just sort of. Um, if folks want to think through it, I, we don't need to rush it, I want it to be right.
Well, do we, you know, the other thing I think about, do, wouldn't we be better off maybe just to leave it as general and not try to identify who that third person is going to be? I mean, if it said shall include a third member.
Well, I, the problem, uh, what, I think they need, I think it would be helpful for the experience from the committee itself. As opposed.
I agree with that, yeah.
So that's why I think it should either come from a committee or somebody who has worked on a committee, who has some insight into uh, what is required, as opposed to just somebody else.
Um.
Shall the third member of an existing committee if available? Or if uh, appropriate or something like that.
I think you had it there, Leila, when you said a third member of an existing committee, uh, will always have a pool of people on existing committees. Uh, in some cases will have a, the committee that we're trying to fill. So that's general enough to give.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think the councillor or the city manager at the time will probably have a good sense of whom that person should be to some extent. Um.
Once you add the word city in front of committee then, and so there's no confusion, shall include a third member of an existing city committee.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's good.
Okay. Okay. That's good.
So this, so we can put this into effect and review it a year from now. And make any changes that, once we, we've, we've gone through it and we figure out what works and what doesn't work, we can always edit it.
Absolutely.
Next council can always edit it.
Yeah, yeah.
So can I go back to G before, or I guess it's E now, before we, um, can you refresh this? Is the or a majority of city council in the charter? Or is it just by the mayor?
Oh, in terms of the removals?
Yeah.
That's a good question. Let me pull it up.
And can you make the page larger too, when you have a chance? Wow.
This is the charter.
Um, so we have a lot of he's in there, by the way.
Uh, just don't even get me started.
It was written in the late nineteen forty.
Oh, my God. Uh, it's not my pronouns.
I think if you go a little farther, it goes down, says about removal somewhere.
Um, election.
I think you went too far. Go back a little bit. I think.
No, this is the all the things I can't do and can do.
The mayor shall, what does it say there?
The manager shall. So the mayor's powers and duties are here. He shall sign all approved records, proceedings, counter signs, blah, blah, blah. He has no veto power.
What? Yeah, I, I thought it said in there somewhere that the mayor could remove people from committees. I don't know where it's at.
You do a search on.
Now you're testing my skills here. Um, how do you do that? This is online. I don't have a PDF. Um.
I just want to make sure that we're consistent. If it is in the charter, uh, maybe that's something you can just take a look at. And here's why I'm asking the question is I, this is another one where I see conflict. Where um, somebody gets mad at somebody and a city council member raises all kinds of heck and pretty soon you've got them trying to move somebody off of a committee that everybody else is happy with. The mayor uh, is only one option, but city council members can, do you see what I'm saying is that I could see conflict that.
Yeah, I totally.
Ever happens, but.
I.
Fight for the worst, right, Linda? Hope for the best.
Always, always. I, you know, I scoured this thing and I never, I don't recall finding anything about removals, just appointments.
Right, yeah, I don't see it there and I, maybe I'm just dreaming. Maybe it was just.
I have to.
Maybe it's just in the rules of procedures.
Sorry to be disgusting. Um, I think that's right, because I, I've read this pretty darn carefully, um, when I was coming up with the approach, because I didn't obviously want to do anything in conflict with the charter. Um. Yeah, I mean, really, the only powers discussed relative to the mayor is right here.
Powers and duties.
Under if councillors.
Talks that they're responsible for setting the agenda of the meeting, because there must be somewhere else where the mayor's discussed. I didn't see it in that last one you just showed us.
That's in the, our rules of procedure.
Okay, I thought it was in the charter.
Which, which up to a few years ago, we didn't even have rules and procedures, if you remember.
Right.
We got Jerry.
Whatever.
Before he retired.
I'm glad you have them now. Um, wait, those are.
Well, the city charter, if you've read the thing, it's pretty basic, doesn't get into a lot of detail.
Really doesn't. Um.
And I, as I said, I don't think that city charter has been, uh, changed, I think it was written in the late nineteen forties. I remember somebody asked about the city charter and Jerry had to find it in an old file out in the garage. And we put it on the, we put it on the website for that. I don't think anybody had looked at it in thirty years.
Uh, it's cutting it, cutting it close for me on the.
Do you know, Leila, how difficult it is to go back and revise the city charter? It's not just an action by the council, right? It must require some other.
It has to go to the vote of the people.
Uh, can you, can you increase the size of that for just, sure, that'd be really helpful, thank you.
Yeah. Hold on.
Well, are we, are we getting close to being comfortable with this language? So we can approve this tonight, or how are we doing, guys? We were doing so well tonight till we got to the last item and then we hit the ditch.
Down a little bit more. Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm kind of mixed, mayor, in terms of approving it tonight, because I'm always resist on the fly editing and then approving something that you haven't had a chance to really digest. But on the other hand, I'd like to see us get moving on the issue, so.
And we always have, we always have the ability to go back and edit it if, if something becomes glaringly.
Yeah, but it doesn't look like it's working six months from now, you can go back, edit it and amend it.
We didn't make any huge changes. I mean, we edited this. And this last piece, which I feel pretty good about, um, but again, I like to do things right. So what is it? Measure twice, cut once. Um. I will, I will defer to you all.
Do, do the rules specify a method for amending the rules?
I don't believe so, but I think if you make a motion, um, then we just adopt this language. So when we made that change to our start time, we just did that via motion. Uh, so we would update this document and replace the one that's online.
Well, I know we're anxious to get the, the next two members onto the short term rental committee and stuff. We don't approve this tonight, we're gonna end up pushing this thing back a month or two, so, so if you guys are comfortable, give me a motion and we'll do it, or, or not, whatever you want to do.
Well, I think we should adopt this uh, selection process for committee members. Um. As, as stipulated.
A point of order, mayor, did you want to ask for any, if there is any public input before we could take a vote? In case there's an eagle eye out there that saw something that we haven't thought of.
That's a good idea.
Now, do we have any public input on this before we vote on it?
And do you have a hand raise? Um, Bob Joseph, well, let Bob in. Bob, just be able to unmute.
I, I, it's actually Joe Newhouse. You've changed F.
You're hiding behind the curtain again.
Yeah, I am. You've changed F so that it says what you definitely didn't want to do at your last meeting. So if you reread F now, the committee is presenting a slate at the council meeting of people. And then the mayor at that council meeting would then have to say, no, I don't want those people. So what it should be saying is um, maybe, um, just change it so it says that the mayor makes a selection from final applicants suggested by the committee. You don't want the committee putting this, what you said last month was you don't want the committee bringing the slate to the council and having to have the mayor publicly say, no, I don't want that person.
That's right. Can you put that, the word version back up?
So you would have the committee bring their selections to the mayor, and then the mayor would present their selections at the city council meeting and it would be endorsed by the council.
The mayor would make a selection from the, for instance, if there was one person to be appointed, maybe the committee would bring them two people, maybe the committee would bring the mayor three people, and then the mayor makes their selection. That, that seems to allow what you guys were trying to get. you guys were trying to get to in the first place, where the mayor still has some authority to select the people, but not in a public forum.
At the next
We could, we could just get rid of the, at the next available council meeting. That doesn't have to be in our rules, rules and regulations.
Yeah, that would work.
See, I knew there was some genius out there that was gonna find something.
It was Joe.
It was Joe.
Or Bob. Or Bob, yeah.
He'll take credit for it, I'm sure.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Joe.
Yeah, that sounds good. I like that now.
Yeah, I do too. Okay, so there's a motion on the table. There's no second.
Uh, I'll second it if there's no other public comment.
So it's been moved to second to adopt this as we've amended it, right?
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved to seconded. Uh, no other public comment that I'm hearing. So all in favor of approving this committee selection process amendment to our rules and procedures, say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. I think we unanimously approve that uh, update.
I think this is major. I think it makes our process much more transparent and I think it's really good work. I'm really pleased.
Good.
Great. We'll get that updated and
We got a lot of work done here tonight. It may not seem like it, but we did, I think. So Leila, you have the floor for your managerial report.
Oh, right.
You're probably running out of gas coming off of COVID, so I'm gonna move this along for you so we don't go too late.
Oh, thanks. Uh, I'm pretty impressed how I held up today. Um, I just a couple of quick announcements. Uh, there will be no planning commission meeting this month. We don't have any active applications that will be considered. Uh, we have also canceled court for the month, uh, but we have hired an assistant city recorder, which I am so excited to have. Uh, her name is Nancy Jones. She has a home in Rockaway. She has a lot of private sector experience. Uh, we're just extremely organized, super energetic, and I think will just be a tremendous asset to uh, our department. She will be starting uh, the day I get back from vacation. So she'll be starting on August twenty-second. Uh, and uh, her first sort of charge will be to get the court um, back up and running in September. And I just want to give a shout out to Ashley Myers, who was our former city recorder, assistant city recorder. She's going to help uh, train uh, Nancy and get Nancy up to speed. And then Nina and I are hungrily awaiting to delegate lots of stuff uh, to Nancy. So Nancy will actually be uh, the person who will be uh, supporting our council meetings. Uh, Nina will be assisting and training in September. And then hopefully by October, Nancy will uh, be our, our new person who's um, facilitating these meetings, doing the minutes uh, and all that other work. So you'll get real familiar with her once she starts, but I'm thrilled. We had a good candidate pool. Uh, it was actually a pretty hard decision to make, but ultimately we landed with someone who uh, has a place locally and uh, that's a big, as you know, it's an enormous challenge for us uh, as well. And I think I'll throw out there too, that Dan, um, we did have a public works uh, person will be leaving the city, uh, his partner. Um, uh, will be moving to another, they're moving to another state. And so it's a, it's a big loss for us, but we will have another opening and that will be posted um, pretty soon. And then again, uh, we have the um, CMGC just went out, so that's on the city's website. Just another shout outs, folks, if you want to run for office, time's a ticking, uh, reach out to us, cityhall@ci-mansanita.org.us. And if you're interested in running for office for councillor Tanja's uh, open seat, all that information's on the website. So lots of things happening. And I'm sure I forgot ten things, but
Well, you could tell us later.
I will.
All right, thanks, everybody.
I do have one question, man, and I, it's not to uh, make the meeting go longer, but we had talked last month about having uh, a moment where at the beginning of the meeting normally where the council would talk about the activities that they've been involved with for the, and, and you're getting a pass because you had COVID, so we don't have to worry about that.
You know, I'm so embarrassed because it was on the forecaster and I was like, what is this? And so I took it off.
Well, maybe it's not something we wanted to, I encourage just to consider uh, moving forward. I think it would be a nice legacy for the council uh, to comment on activities they've had for the previous month, so.
Yeah, I will add it. I will add it back. I was, uh, yeah, I'll, I'll blame the COVID brain, but I was like, what is
Understandable. Not an issue. Just if we could do it, maybe starting next
For the reminder, I'll have a counselor update added to the forecaster. It's done.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks for your patience.
Well, thank you, everybody, Wade, for all your hard work this afternoon and this evening. I'm gonna adjourn the meeting at seven fifty-six.
Good job.
Thanks, y'all.